Hello, this is Gary Morgan with ArcLight.blogspot.com in the burrow. I'm going to do a brief interview here with the chairman of the Jackson County Commission, Mr. Tim Guffey. We're going to be talking about a couple of things, mainly about budget. That's the big topic right now, as some of you may know if you've been keeping up with the events here in Jackson County. The Jackson County Commission, they try to provide the best services for the citizens of Jackson County possible, but of course, that takes money. Things are not free in this world and it takes money to run a commission to provide services. And that's what we're going to be talking about a little bit this morning. And I'm going to be asking Mr. Guffey a few questions about that. The first thing I want to talk to you about, in the serious budget situation, the general fund that the county is in, what, where do you stand right now in the 2020 budget for the general fund? Basically, how much money is there to be spent right now, approximately?
Well, we actually approved about a $265,000 budget deficit for 2020. Now, we do have about $900,000 in the bank as far as available cash, but for the size county we are, that ain't near the money that we should have in reserve. If we lost a bridge today, that wouldn't be enough money to cover a bridge that we lost. So, our budget problems are getting worse and worse than they have been for the last seven, eight years since TVA has started to shut down and leave Jackson County. So, our biggest tax revenue is depleting.
Right. One of the things I want to ask you about, and this is mentioned, and I don't ask, I'm not going to ask these questions for just out of the blue, there's reasons for this. One of the things that's mentioned in recommendations and law in dealing with budget crisis, do you foresee ever doing a, within the immediate future, I guess we could say, within the next two years, a reduction in force as a result of the general fund budget crisis? In other words, where you're going to have to lay employees off or terminate possibly temporary employees?
Yeah, right now, the way it looks, one of our biggest costs right now is council on aging, is our senior services. And it's been one of the last things that I would ever want to cut. But we're at a point that if we don't do something in the next 18 to 24 months to fix this problem, that's going to be one of the places that we're going to have to start making cuts at. And then after that, then hopefully, we don't get that far, but then it would come to the courthouse next. But first thing would be council on aging, just to be totally honest, because that's about a $400,000 cost to the county that if we cut it out, you know, would pretty much balance our budget deficit.
Okay, council on aging, does that also include the, of course, you've got a building out there?
Yes.
Now, is that building county property or is that city property?
It's county.
County property, okay. With reducing that service, council on aging, would that include prescription programs that's out there?
It's the senior RX, council on aging, rural transportation are all grouped in together.
Okay. One of the reasons, Tim, that we're talking, I'm of the opinion that folks are not grasping the full scope of the problem. And it's not because you haven't been talking about it.
Correct.
You know, we've had community meetings, town hall meetings where legislators come in. But I'm of the opinion that folks are not grasping the seriousness of the problem, nor had they grasped the seriousness of the problem for some period of time, even when Mr. Hodges was up here. There seems to be a deficit there. I don't know if it's, and I don't even think it, it doesn't matter whose fault it is. The fact is, the county is in a budget crisis. Reduction in force is one of those ways, and I know another commissioners, they have stated so publicly, they don't want to do this. They don't want to reduce council on aging.
No.
But as you say, that would be about 400K. And you've got by law, and I think it's 11-8-3 in Alabama law, the budget has to be balanced. That's the law, that's the requirement.
It is.
And again, it's just like y'all, think about it, folks. If you're in a home budget and you've got to pay your, although we don't have to pay a lease or a sale price for the courthouse, the services that the county provides, in other words, all these cars you see on the road, the sheriff's department, the fire, volunteer fire department, all that, the county gives money to that, supplements their income. And it cannot, as I see it, like I say, it just cannot keep on going. And that's the reason I'm sitting here today. I want to help communicate to the public the seriousness of the crisis.
And I agree with you. I don't know what we need to do to get it out, the word out to more people. You bring up the sheriff's department, that's a very good example because it's about 55% of our budget, our general fund budget goes to, budget to sheriff's department and the jail. And it's not a matter of if somebody's going to get hurt, it's a matter of when somebody gets hurt or loses their life, because we do not have an accurate amount of deputies or jailers that we need to run this size county. I was actually, I worked with the reserve half for like seven, eight years, was actually with a deputy in Paint Rock Valley on a call. And because deputy was gone transporting a prisoner to prison, we had one deputy out of six, and only left two. We were on a call, they were on a call, and then they got a burglary call in Bryant. So, we had to go from Paint Rock Valley at a high rate of speed to Bryant on an active burglary call.
That would be about 45 miles, if not more?
Yeah, it'd take about an hour and 10 minutes if you drove it regular.
Right.
But you know, we're at a high rate of speed and it still took us 45 minutes to get there.
Right.
And by the time we got there, they done broke in and they done gone.
Right.
Just, we just thanked God that nobody was at home. The security system went off and that's how we were notified. But what if somebody had been home and they would have hurt those people?
So, and that's about the average, as I understand it, two, maybe three at most deputies to be on duty. And this, Jackson County is, I'm, at nighttime, as I understand, is the fourth largest state in the Union, is that right? I mean, in Alabama, fourth largest county?
Yeah.
Yeah, fourth largest county in Alabama.
And I think we're the, we're maybe the third in landmass mileage. But we have got to do something. Even if we doubled the amount of deputies we got on the road, according to the state of Alabama, we're still not where we need to be at as far as deputies on the road.
What is the state recommended on that?
I'd have to look back at my papers, but I think for our size county, it was per shift, I think it was 19 or 20?
Holy smoke.
And we got, you know, three or four.
Right. There's no way?
No.
You'd have that, meet state requirement?
Uh-uh.
No way?
Like I said, that's not a, I don't think it's, they're not going to do anything to you. They know if your budget don't prove, you know, you can't do it. But that's what they say, you want to be safe, that's what you need. Now, you look at the city of Scotchburg at nighttime, just for the city, I think there's what, 12?
So, there's a lot, so I'm not sure.
I don't know the exact number, I think it's probably 12. And then so you, we got four running this whole county. And Scotchburg's got three times the amount of deputies, officers that we got for just one small, you know, for the town.
Right. Now, so we've talked about reduction in force, let me just get back to that, and I'm talking about people here. Do you foresee reducing the staff here in the courthouse as a solution to the budget crisis?
You know, I hope and pray not, but if something isn't done, it may come to them.
Right.
If something isn't done right away.
And how long out do you foresee right away? How long is that?
I mean, well, like I said, we got about $900,000 in the bank, and if we're running a $260,000 budget deficit, if nothing changes, nothing goes up, you know, you're looking at three years, that we're having to take $265,000 out of that cash balance to make, you know, to make sure we self-balance, well, that ain't going to last for three years. So, in three years, if nothing goes up, it's three years.
So, we've identified, you identified the council on aging would have to be cut, and that includes a senior prescription program. Is other services, reduction in services, is there anything else that you think of? In fact, I know you've got libraries, you have...
Well, we've already cut our fund into libraries. We don't, I think council on aging is going to be one of the last appropriations that we have. We're not paying, the last one we have is council on aging and 4H. And we've already cut 4H out, which is another good program, but we just couldn't, you know, we just didn't have the funds to keep funding it. We've asked the Board of Education if they would fund it to keep it going, because it is a good program.
Right. Of course, a lot of times, we've talked about, let's talk about it a little bit more. Anything, let me backtrack just a little bit. Anything else as far as reduction in services? For instance, reduction in services also include cutting courthouse hours? Is this, do you think that's going to happen again?
That has been brought up by the commissioners about closing, maybe closing a day a week, which would be a savings, or going to nine-hour days and working four days. You know, there've been a lot of different ways to try to figure out a way to save that $265,000. But we're going to, I'm hoping, and I feel confident, that our legislators are going to step up this time when they go in session and do something.
What would you like them to do? How about home rule? What do you think about that?
Home rule's not popular.
I snicker about that, because I notice some, a lot of folks don't want to see it.
Right, they don't. And here's the thing, home rule, I wouldn't want home rule just to say that the county commission do anything they want to do for an unlimited amount of time. But if they give us home rule for 12 months and say, "Look, y'all go in and fix your problem, and at the end of the 12 months," because it has been told us that the legislators feel confident in the commissioners that's here now, but their only worry is that what if down the road, there's a rogue group of commissioners that just want to raise taxes and go crazy? So, my suggestion was, well, just give us home rule for 12 months. And then you've got the same commissioners in there, and we could go in and, we could put a one cent sales tax on the ballot, if that's what the commissioners wanted to do. Here's another thing, tag fees have been $1.50 since 1942. It's never been raised, but in DeKalb County, they raised it to $10. All right, so that puts almost a million dollars a year in their general fund budget just on what they raised, their tag fee up. So, there's some little things that we could do to fix our budget deficit. It's still not going to fix our overall road problem, but as far as, if we're just talking about the general fund budget problem that we have, there's some small things that we could do to fix that if we had the authority, but we just don't, we don't have the authority to make those changes.
I'm not going to ask you why they wouldn't authorize a bill to increase tag fees. Do you think that's a possibility?
It is, and it was one of the resolutions that I sent. Last year, we sent them about eight or nine resolutions, I believe, or eight or nine, it might have been three resolutions, but they were about eight or nine different things that they could do. And another thing, on the one cent sales tax, I'm not, I'm conservative, I'm not big on raising taxes, but if you've cut everywhere that you can cut, and I have made it clear that anybody who wants to come in and get a copy of our budget, wants to look at our bank accounts, I'd be glad to show anybody. So, we don't hide anything about how much money comes in and where it goes out. But we've got to do something, whether it's to add a penny of sales tax, or they redistribute the nine cents, you know, that's up to the legislators, because that's their job. We take the money that we got, and our job is to use the funds that we have and run this county the best we can. And the people want better roads, but the only way we're going to get them is we're going to have to have dollars to get better roads.
Right. And repair the ones that we have.
Yeah. We got $6.1 million worth of slides right now that we don't, like I said, we've got a million dollars, a little bit less in the bank, so even if we could, had the cash on hand, I mean, it would be hard to get those fixed, you know, in a quick time, but we just don't have the money. We don't have that luxury. I think it's Marshall County, I looked at their budget and they had, in their general fund, they got $10 million in reserve, just in case they need it. You know, and we just don't have that luxury.
How did they increase their reserve like that? Do you have any idea?
Well, just they get, they get sales tax and the sales tax growth.
That's an important point.
It is.
Sales tax. The Jackson County Commission gets no money from sales tax, and that to support sheriff's department, revenue probate, which revenue includes mapping and appraisal and all that. Other words, Jackson, the schools get, is that right? Schools get settled. That's a misperception. You hear that come up a lot. Well, you get this penny and a half.
Yeah, they say two cents county tax. And it is, it goes to the county schools, 75% goes to the county schools, and 25% of the two cent sales tax goes to Scotchburg City. We've got to make a change somewhere. The county has to be a part of the sales tax, because that's the only growth tax that's growing. The two cents that our education received has grown 42% in the last five years, 42%. So, you know, and all we're asking for is one cent.
Right. Well, how about a half a cent?
Even a half a cent, a half a cent would, the only reason I said one cent is when I had earmarked it to 75% roads and bridges, 12 and a half percent to the jail and the sheriff's department, and 12 and a half percent to county buildings and maintenance. And the reason I went with one cent was to be able to do, in order to get our roads, we got 1,163 miles of just counting roads. All right, that's one way. So, if you think about two lanes, you know, you're getting over 3,000 lane miles. But it would take us, if we'd done 100 miles a year, it'd take us 11 years. So, we'd be on 11-year rotation, is what we should be on, 11 to 15-year rotation at least. And at the rate we're going right now, it'll take us, if we paved the road today, it would take us about 140 years to get back to that road at the rate we're going right now. So, we're going to start seeing some base failure, we're going to start seeing roads go back to dirt. And it's not because we don't have good county commissioners or any, we have made cuts, we have cut everywhere we can cut. The funds just is not there. We've lost almost what, a million and a half dollars from TVA since they've started cutting. They've cut Widows Creek and leaving our area, so we've lost those funds. Cars are getting more fuel efficient, so our gas taxes stayed pretty much level. And even with the tax increase that the legislators done on gas, this, in 2020, we're going to get about $550,000 roughly. And even when it does go and it's full maximum, we're going to get $900,000. And that ain't nowhere near enough money to, we're not going to be able to pay no 800 miles of road per year with that.
Hey, this is all good. I mean, we've talked about the problems and how to resolve some of the problems. Are you still working with the, with the folks across the street, the legislative delegation to resolve this? Are they working with you, or is this a problem?
Yeah, no, I have been in communication with Steve Livingston, and we've been trying to work to come up with a plan. I fixed to get him some more resolutions to him. Not sure where to go from there, but Steve is reaching out. He said he understands that there is a problem and he wants to try to help fix it.
Right. There's got to be revenue, there's got to be money to resolve the problem. There is no ifs, ands, and buts, doubts about it. And in the commission, not only this commission, but previous commissions have actually been operating in a deficit situation some period of time.
Right.
And so, that tells me, because the state, the Alabama Department of Public Examiners has recognized and sent forward a report on it. So, they recognize it, and of course, the law says you can't do that. The budget has to be balanced, but what are you going to, there's, it's a conundrum.
Right.
I mean, it's almost like, damn if you do, damn if you don't, and that's the way, exactly what it is.
Yeah.
You know, the law says you have to be balanced, but you can't be balanced because there's not enough revenue.
Right.
So, how long is the deficit going to continue? Do you have any idea? I mean, when, where's it going to go? I mean, is there going to be a stopping? I mean, personally, we couldn't continue. We couldn't run our credit card dead up because we're going to be bankrupt.
Right.
So, what for the county now? And that's the citizens.
Basically, if we don't fix any roads and we cut council on aging out, we could run this county and maintain the services we got. We'd be pretty close each year. So, if we cut council on aging out, put that $400,000 to balance the budget, and we don't pave any roads, you know, all we're doing is maintenance, filling potholes, spraying the grass, doing the maintenance things that the public works has to do, that's all we would be able to do. So, there would be no roads paved, no senior services, and then we would, we could keep going then as we're going. But I don't think the people of Jackson County want it that way.
Oh, roads.
The people of Jackson County deserve better now.
Well, roads is a big topic.
It is. It is. It's one of the biggest topics.
That's first and foremost on most people's list.
But it's like anything else, if we want good roads, we got to come up with the money to pay for it.
Let me just ask you about one more thing we haven't talked about here, and although you've brought it up before, and I've discussed it a little bit, the condition of the building here.
Yeah.
Where are we at on that? Of course, we've got some ground sinking, for whatever reason it may be, either possible sinkhole, possible water inundation under the, under the supporting ground level, supporting soil level. So, what are you trying to do to resolve that problem?
As you know, we got an engineer report that got us a little bit of information on it, and pretty much confirmed what we already knew, that the building is sinking. I have requested other companies, and I got an engineering group that's fixing to come out and give us a hard number on what it's going to cost to repair it. But I can tell you right now, the price is going to be a whole lot more than we can afford. So, I have reached out to Senator Shelby, and I'm going to be meeting with his chief of staff to discuss, since he's chairman of the appropriations committee, to see if there's some funds out there for historical buildings, maybe he can help us. And I'm actually trying right now, I'm reaching out to Governor Ivey to see if we can get some assistance from the state. The courthouse is falling, it is sinking, and it's a problem that we have to deal with. We got to fix it, because if we don't, we're just going to sit here and let it fall down.
Yeah, is, have y'all hired a structural action? I'm not talking about a geotech engineer, which I know that's what the report, how about a structural engineer? Has he been out here yet?
That's who's, that's who's coming next, yes.
Any idea when?
He's supposed to be here between now and Christmas.
Okay.
And get us a hard number on what it's going to take to actually make the repair.
And give an accurate listing or best, best listing that he can provide as far as what the damage is to the courthouse?
Exactly, yes. So, and this company is, they do it all. So, not only they come out and do the engineering, structural engineering is part of it, but then they do the repair part too, so they can give us good hard numbers on what we need.
This company is an Alabama company?
It is, they're out of Montgomery.
Is, that would be, is that professional services or do they have to be bid out?
We'll probably, I'd say we'll take bids, but it's going to be a specialty, and I wouldn't think there's a whole lot of people that do this type of work on this scale.
Let's talk about one more thing, Mr. Guffey. Employee turnover. You mentioned yesterday in the commission meeting that there'd been quite a few, 40, over 40 employees that you've lost going to, it almost seems like the Jackson County trains them, trains them to a great standard, they're great employees, and then they find out they can go somewhere else and make more money. You want to make a comment about that?
Yeah, I do. We've lost 42 employees in the last 12 months, and the turnover has just costed the county a huge amount of money where we're having to retrain. And folks are, you know, what's sad is they're, they're going to other neighboring counties and making more money. They're going to municipalities like Scotchburg and making more money. So, that's another aspect of our budget, is the reason we need increase in funding is so that we can keep employees, so that we can keep our garbage service going. We've lost deputies to Madison County, to Marshall County, to DeKalb County, because they're paying their deputies more than we can pay them. So, now we're getting into a life-saving problem, to where we're losing good quality deputies, because we're not able to pay, you know, just a good salary that these other counties are paying.
And so, what is the total amount of workforce here, sheriff's department, courthouse?
How many employees?
Yes.
We got about roughly around 235.
So, basically, you're talking about, let's see, that'd be about, that's about 20% of your workforce is dropping out?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a little more?
Yeah, it's, I think it's about 20, I think she said 27%.
Yeah.
26%. And so, every time we lose one, and you know, we're having to re-interview, and like I said, once we do hire somebody, then we're having to retrain them. So, you know, there's cost associated with that. And then it's the reduction in services, because we got, we just don't have the people to do the job.
Okay. Okay, so we talked about the roads, we talked about the building, we've talked about personnel and how to correct the problem if it continues, and what, how y'all are working about, working with the folks across the street, legislative delegation, even the folks in Washington to resolve our problems. And then that's good. And this citizen says, "Thank you. I appreciate your efforts in this." And again, the reason why I'm sitting here, taking the time, and you've taken the time out of your day, is to express to the citizens the seriousness of the problem that we're in.
Yes.
And folks, I'm asking you, and I know Mr. Guffey's asking, think about this on a more personal level. The county, you've got fire protection, law protection, you know, police protection, the schools. Now, in the schools, the law says you can't necessarily take, touch that school money, but a legislative delegation can pass an act, a special act, to give part of that schools money to Jackson County. Will that be just an act, or you think that'll come before a vote?
I believe it would, I believe that legislation would do it to a vote of the people, is how I think they would do it.
Of course, you know the schools are going to have something to say about that.
And I understand, because you know, we don't want to do anything to hurt education, to hurt the kids, but at some point, we got to make a decision. And when I say "we," I'm talking about the people of Jackson County's got to make a decision, do we want to pay a higher tax and get these things done that we need done, or do we want to redistribute the taxes that we already have? And I'm fine with however the people of Jackson County want to do it. But I'm, and I'm the one sitting here saying, but something has to be done now. We've kicked the can down the road for too long. You know, for seven, eight years, that's been kicked down, the can down the road and passing the buck on, and we're going to have to fix it. And I made up my mind when I got in here last November that I'm going to fix the problem one way or another. I'm going to work till we get this problem fixed.
So, it's basically what it comes down to, the fix of one of two things, more money or less services.
Exactly.
Basically, that's what it amounts to. There is no ifs, ands, and buts.
Right.
And let, now, there is another way, I guess, you could, which includes the more money. That'd be borrowing money. Do you foresee the commission borrowing, what, to include the building that needs to be fixed, and the engineering needs to be done, and the roads? All this could very easily add up to $10 million.
Right.
Everything.
Yeah.
Do you foresee, does the commission foresee borrowing that much money? Yeah, of course, it's got to be paid back.
Right, and you know, we've been asked that.
Or a bond, even, excuse me, even a bond, that's still borrowing.
But you know, and we've been asked that, and I've been running some rough numbers on $6.1 million, which is just the slides, the mountain slides. And just on that, you're looking at about a half million dollars a year interest. So, before you even pay back any on the note, on the principal that you borrowed, you're about four, I can't remember, $400,000 to $500,000 in interest payments. If somebody would loan us the money, you know, and we just don't have the revenue stream to pay that kind of money back right now.
In a bond or a warrant issue? Other words, a government bond or government warrant, which the counties are authorized to do that? How would that work out? Generally, currently, the bond, the percentage is low right now. Other words, what you'd have to pay.
Right.
Of course, that flows away.
It does.
What, 2% or under 2% now, I think, but what, how about that?
I just don't feel, that'd be about like me or you in our house saying, "Okay..." house, saying, okay, our bills are four thousand dollars a month, and, uh, I only make three thousand, so we're gonna have, and get some credit cards to, to pay our bills on, knowing that our pay ain't gonna increase. Uh, at some point, it's, it's gonna go bad, and so I don't wanna put the county in a further, uh, hardship by borrowing the money for a short-term fix. It needs, we need to look long-term and fix the problem and fix it for good.
Yeah, thank you. That, that covers the main thing, now, I got one other I wanna ask you about, 'cause several people have asked me about it.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and I, I don't know, we talked a little bit about it while I go, excuse me, uh, vehicle usage.
Yeah.
It came up to, thing, uh, at times have been brought up that you use the county vehicle, use a county vehicle, drive back and forth, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, uh, the only time I've used a...
What?
County vehicle is, um, you know, like if I go to Montgomery, I had to go to legislative conference, uh, I had to go to training, meetings, uh, I, you know, sometime I would use a county vehicle, and I think I've just done that once, uh, since I've been in here in office, uh, I guess somebody seen me driving it, uh, but out of the, all the county chairmans through the state of Alabama, I think I'm the only one that do, does not have a county vehicle, and I do put a lot of miles, and, you know, I charge mileage, uh, but it just don't make a lot of sense, uh, you know, when I could get a vehicle and drive it for the county, then what it would, what it pays to have to charge at fifty-eight cents a mile, uh, it just ain't good economics for the county.
Right. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, again, I just invite everybody, anybody that would like to come, uh, sit down with me, our administrator, Bob Manning, um, I'd be glad for, to show anybody our books, show people where the money comes in, where it goes out, uh, and I encourage people to get more involved, come to our meetings, we meet every Monday at four-thirty, the first and the third are work sessions, second, fourth are meetings, so, uh, come down and get involved. Uh, we wanna be open, and, uh, everybody know how their county's working and, and the shape that we're in, so, uh, anybody who wants to give me a call, I'd be glad to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Goffey, appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.